Thank you for attending the 3:30 briefing session. Ms. Marsworth, will you call the roll, please?
Yes. Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Navarrete.
Here.
It's my understanding that councilmembers Zepone, Bingle, and Klitschke will be coming.
It is my understanding that we will go for Jihit.
Bingle is in route. He just texted me, so.
What was it? I'm sorry.
Councilmember Bingle will be here momentarily.
Yeah, we'll acknowledge his arrival.
Yep.
Sure. We ready? All right, for tonight's agenda, first for the boards and commissions. We do have one interview or applicant that's here today for the Salary Review Commission, and that is Lori Kinnear.
First, let's say welcome former council president, Ms. Kinnear. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, and just for the record, I miss you all.
Ditto, ditto. My first question is in the spirit of councilmember Stratton, what high school did you go to?
I went to Palo Alto High School, Palo Alto, California.
In regards to the Salary Commission, any questions?
Yeah, can you speak to us about why you're interested in applying to this position?
Yeah, that's the question I always used to ask, and I will tell you that I think this commission needs someone on it with lived experience of the actual job, and as a council member for eight years, actually seven and a half, city council president, I have an intimate knowledge, and I also wrote the legislation for this, so I'm intimately familiar with it. I think it's really important that we be very circumspect about how we deal with the salaries of both the mayor, council president, council. We want to have good people that are going to be signing up and running for office, and part of the enticement is going to be a salary, that you don't have to work two jobs. So I want to bring that perspective to this commission.
Any other question? Councilwoman Cathcart.
Yeah, no question, but I just want to thank you for applying and just say that, you know, we've obviously spoken many times in the past on subjects related to this, and I really appreciate your thoughtfulness, and so we look forward to having you serve in this position.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Dillon.
Yeah, I'm really excited. It's so good to see you, and I know you bring a wealth of expertise and institutional knowledge, and we'll really serve this board equitably, and yeah, welcome back.
Thank you, thank you.
Councilmembers Zepone.
I'll just ask you another question. I was just wondering if you could speak to kind of what you view as comparables, and you know, we've sat together and looked at lots of bargaining contracts. Do you look at just comparables of other elected officials? Do you look at types of work and other professionals? And I'm just curious what your philosophy is on that.
Yeah, and honestly, I was thinking about this because I was hoping somebody would ask it. It's very difficult to come up with comparables, because if you look at every single city, nothing is quite the same. So either they're not a strong mayor form of government, or they don't have as many boards and commissions to deal with, or there are more council members on, so there's nothing that's absolutely apples to apples, and that makes it kind of tricky. So I think you do have to look at not just what the possible comparables are, but look at your community, what it is that you're actually asking people to do. You all serve on eighty-five, I don't know if anybody's bothered to count, eighty-five boards and commissions between the seven of you. That's a lot. You also have ten to twelve neighborhood councils that you're responsible for. You also have emails, meetings, I mean, it goes on and on and on. So when I start looking at that, I think, all right, what other community has those kinds of requirements? Very few, or they have more, but they also then have more council members to share the load. So it's a bit of a balancing act, but I can't really say that we could look at one community and say, yep, that's it.
I will just say that is a discussion that's across the state in every municipality from councilmembers I've met who are struggling with the same issue of compensation and balance of time and family, work, one job versus two jobs for a sustainable lifestyle. So I just want to thank you for stepping up and putting your name in, because it is a challenging conundrum, as you would say.
Yes, that's my favorite word, thank you.
Councilmember Navarrete.
Yeah, I want to thank you also for stepping up as a council member who works full-time, and this is my part-time job. I really appreciate you being part of this board.
Thank you.
My last comment, not a question. I just have full faith in you and appreciate you stepping up and to sharing your experience with commissioners who've never served in these roles to know what it's like, so thank you for that, and I hope your life as a former elected official is treating you well.
It is, except that I was used to giving orders and things were actually happening, so when I give orders to my husband now, nothing happens. So it's a little bit of a disconnect. The dog will obey me, but she doesn't have opposable thumbs, so. There you go. Okay, thank you, everybody, and we'll be in touch.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Lori. Under the same section of boards and commissions, we do have a request of a motion to defer the CHHS board appointment.
I move to defer that indefinitely.
I'll second.
I don't know who the applicant is or why we're deferring indefinitely, so if somebody could maybe give some description, that'd be great.
It was a...
Mr. McDowell's prepared to speak today.
Councilmembers, we are deferring because there's four vacancies, and they need to go before the board to be interviewed, and then we're going to all bring them all back as one slate, and align their expiration dates.
So this individual is coming back for sure?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you. So it's moved in second to defer indefinitely, is that what he said?
Yes.
Indefinitely. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any no's? Abstentions? The ayes have it.
All right, thank you. Now moving into the emergency ordinances, we do have a request motion to amend the ordinance C. 36482, and this was a councilmember Bingle proposed amendment. I don't know if we want to come back to that one if he gets here, or if we want to move forward with that action.
Let's come back, we'll speak to, because there's another, there'll be a motion to defer as well.
Okay.
Is there an interest to amend it before deferring it, or just to defer it?
Well, I think we probably just deferred.
I would recommend just deferring it, not taking up the amendment.
What's the issue? Which one?
Short-term rental.
Short-term rentals, at the request of the administration. So...
I'll make a motion to defer ordinance C. 36482 for two weeks.
If you could, make it to March 4th.
March 4th, more than two weeks.
Second? It's been moved in second, deferral till March 4th. All those in favor?
Discussion.
Sorry, yeah, I just, excuse me, I don't know what the concerns are, so I'm going to vote no, but if somebody has more detail, happy to chat offline.
I believe they found a different way to administer the fee without creating a new fee.
And Spencer can come up here and...
Yeah, I thought we had sort of a plan in place, and now I'm hearing otherwise, so that's why I'm confused.
I think there's just a desire to get some answers about collecting data around short-term rentals that would have occurred under the other fee program. So yes, what we've identified is a potential way to achieve the same results in terms of fee collection for administration of the program without creating two different revenue streams, which administratively is easier to do, but that raised a few questions for councilmembers and for the mayor, and so we just need a couple of weeks to kind of resolve that.
So what's the data that we are trying to collect that this would, or that we're not able to?
One of the questions that came up is, could we still understand the number of nights that are rented out for short-term rentals, like how frequently are being used? Under the current revenue stream which we have, which is through the annual permit that occurs, we know where the short-term rentals are operating, but we don't know how frequently they're actually in use, whereas with the nightly fee, that is inherently related, and that's the one that is in question in the ordinance. That would tell us how many nights short-term rentals are being used across the city, basically, so.
Is that data not available in the portal that Airbnb has established?
We think it is, but we haven't connected with Airbnb to find out if we can still have access to the portal, even if there's no fee involved, so that's just a question that we need to ask them. Essentially, there's just a few more questions we need to ask and get answered before we move ahead with the plan.
It'd just be helpful to have some conversation in advance of these so that we, I, know what's going on.
Yeah, and I apologize, I did connect with a few councilmembers, but I didn't catch everybody.
Don't feel bad, Councilwoman Cathcart, I caught it this morning. It was a Friday night at five kind of update, so it's just moving fast. Thank you. We did vote to defer until...
No, that was discussion.
Oh, discussion. All right, there's a motion on the floor to defer till March 4th. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any no's? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Now, excuse me, the next item, ordinance C. 36485, there is a number of amendments proposed to this ordinance relating to the regulation of special events.
Yeah, I'll talk on a number of them, so the one that says Zepone, Dillon, Bingle proposed amendment, this is one just pretty simply asks, there's a class that the Liquor and Cannabis Board provides online, there's an online module. I, in a previous life, was a bartender, and I know that there's a lot of personal liability when you're serving alcohol, and so this amendment just says, take this, you know, thirty-minute class online, helps you understand what your personal liability is when it comes to over-service and service to minors, and I think that one...
Do you want to make a motion on that one? Do them one at a time?
Oh, you don't want me to explain what they are? Fine.
It's a suggestion.
We are taking it one by one.
Okay. I make the motion to adopt the Zepone, Dillon, Bingle proposed amendment listed there first.
Second, Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, so this is required, the education piece? Okay.
Any comments?
I don't think there's any objection to this one right from, okay.
Should we vote? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any no's? Any abstentions? Okay, that motion. On to the next one.
So the second, I'm going to, I'll make the motion to adopt the second Zepone, Dillon, Bingle proposed amendment relating to wristbands, and I guess we can have discussion about that afterward.
It's been moved...
Second.
In second? Discussion?
Yeah.
I just, go ahead and please describe.
Yeah, so again, given my history and working these events, the wristband is a great way to quickly and easily identify people who've already been screened by security or the bartenders, giving them that wristband makes that a lot easier for people to see. If you see somebody who doesn't look quite twenty-one and they don't have a wristband on, it's easier for you to go and age verify. It is certainly not something where it's just like, oh, they have a wristband on for sure, one hundred percent. It's just a way for workers to quickly identify people who may or may not be of age when it comes to alcohol service, so.
Comment, Councilwoman Cathcart? You're good?
No, that explains what it does.
Councilmember Dillon, then councilmember Zepone.
Yeah, I'll just add too that it does say wristband or other, so it can be a stamp, something that is non-transferable. Yeah, I agree, you know, I think that just adds another layer of protection, and when I've talked with some folks in the industry, they do indicate that this also helps protect us, so that was an important thing to keep in mind.
Councilmembers Zepone.
Yeah, I was wondering if Chris Wright can share the communication that you had from the LCB today.
Yes, based on some of the questions regarding wristbands last week, I reached out to the local law enforcement at LCB, asked them their thoughts on wristbands. Their position is that they don't necessarily require it either at the local level or at the state level as part of getting the special occasion license. They're not excited about them, wristbands, they think there's too much dependence on wristbands and other identification instead of using actual photo IDs to check people. So they think that, you know, people get a little less stringent if there's a wristband than about checking IDs when they should be checking IDs, and so they're not excited about it, they, I don't think they have strong opinions about it, but this would be a local requirement that would be added under our ordinance.
Councilwoman Cathcart.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, frankly, I wish the LCB was here to answer questions and talk to us, that would be very helpful, but in my limited experience, I don't hang out a lot in beer gardens, but they tend to check your ID when you enter, so then ID is checked, you're given that wristband, right, or in this case, you'd be given that wristband. I don't recall being, having my ID checked both as I enter the beer garden as well as at the bar, and so to me, as long as that ID is being checked, and then you have that wristband to quickly observe, that would make it a lot easier in my sense, because you're still doing the photo ID, you've got a wristband, it seems like it'd be streamlined in that way, versus just simply checking IDs as you enter, and then it's a free-for-all.
Councilmembers Zepone.
Yeah, I can speak to that, having talked to some providers on this, event organizers, they actually, in their conversations with LCB, they had conversations about, the LCB had concerns about wristbands actually being used and being bought at Walmart, and people using them to sneak into beer gardens, and that they don't like them for that reason. They want them to be wristbands that have a specific design on them or a different way to do it. So I had conversations with a lot of different providers, and several are against this amendment, including Visit Spokane, Downtown Spokane Partnership, HBPA didn't think it was necessary either for putting on events, so these are a lot of the people that do put on the street events. I just don't think it is our role as a city council to tell them the way that they should check their ID. They carry a liability, they know how to work with the LCB to enforce the rule, and so I think that we should be letting them determine the best way for their events. We don't regulate Brick West in the way to require underage people to wear wristbands or people over the age of twenty-one, and city-owned property at Brick West, so I don't know why we are requiring that in other places when there are many events that would be similar to Brick West, so I don't know why this is different.
I would say, I believe the Hospitality Association is in favor of the wristbands, my communication with them has been such. Also, the people at Brick West are professionally licensed folks in that space versus somebody who's doing it for a day, but the first amendment here was for education to say, you know, what you do is important, you can't rely on a wristband, while the wristband is a quick, easy identifier. Again, if somebody who walks up and they're thirteen years old and they're wearing a wristband, I'm still going to say, I need to see your ID. Again, as somebody who, has anybody else worked in this space? Because again, I did for seven years. I run an events business, a very nice, okay? I run an events business, we do this stuff all the time, okay? And so while Liquor Control Board might not be enthusiastic about it, I will tell you as somebody who worked in this space for a very long time, it was a very helpful tool, it is not the end-all, be-all, but it was a very helpful tool, and I don't think it's that onerous. It is legitimately checking somebody's ID when they come in, put a wristband on them, and then you, as the purveyor of alcohol, you are still in final control of what happens there, and so I think that, I think it makes a ton of sense, I don't think it's that onerous to add on.
Councilmember Klitschke, then councilmember Cathcart.
So I think, if I'm understanding correctly, your amendment does have some flexibility, it doesn't have to be a wristband, is that right?
Right.
Because I have hosted events like this, wine tastings, where we only let people over twenty-one in, and we're only doing one-out pours, so I appreciate that there's some flexibility there, I feel like a stamp or something could fill that role. I did hear feedback from the Downtown Spokane Partnership that they don't like wristbands, and I met with the Hospitality Association, well, they seemed pretty flexible, so I think as long as we're being flexible and reasonable in this ordinance and letting people decide how they want to identify people and protect themselves from liability, I think I'm fine with this amendment, but I could also easily go without requiring that and just letting them decide.
Councilmember Zepone? I'm sorry, that was Councilwoman Cathcart, sorry.
I was just going to say, if, you know, kind of comparing things to Brick West, as Councilmember Bingle said, I mean, Brick West, established business, they're there three hundred and sixty-five days a year, it's not a one-day, a fly-by-night, or maybe an occasional event or anything like that, so I think, and the liability is certainly a benefit to helping to disincentivize, you know, bad actors, but it really only applies if they're caught, and so there can be a lot of, you know, bad things that happen that folks are not caught in the act, and so I just think that this is something that helps to put a little bit more of a protection for kids, since we are essentially creating a policy that encourages mixing kids with alcohol, I think this is just a little bit of an extra protection that makes a ton of sense.
Garrett.
And I would say, so this, hopefully everyone's gone to a concert at the Pavilion, so this is standard practice at the Pavilion. Security, when we go through the metal detectors, then instantly they check your ID, whether you want to drink or not, and then they will wristband you. If you don't have one, you go to the bar again, you will be ID'd at the serving location. So this is just good from our experience, from a family atmosphere, and when you're dealing with volume of people as well, so when you have over five thousand people, this is a good way, a good mechanism to keep efficient and also safe and limit that liability.
I'll just comment, I just think the venue or the people putting on should have a decision, I don't know if it should be, I don't think it should be mandatory, you get to decide if you want a wristband or a stamp. Again, the liability's on you as a purveyor of alcohol. I'm thinking most folks, I'm just general, if you got your kids with you, we're hoping you're not going to go get stone-faced and just kind of show out at the event. That's just, hopefully, I hope you haven't had that experience at the Pavilion, if you have, don't tell me. Okay, councilmember Zepone.
That may be practice at the Pavilion, but I know that we've all probably been to events at the arena, and they don't require wristbands at the arena, so again, I think that shows that we allow individual operators to choose how they want. My conversations with the Hospitality Association was that they preferred actually just to allow them to decide. Overall, I think the intent of this ordinance is to align with state law, and most of this is aligning with state law, and so I don't, I think we should just continue to align with the state law and not have extra restrictions that aren't necessary here. This also, the language here, if a operator chooses to put X's on the hands of under-twenty-one year olds, they would be in violation of this, that would not satisfy the requirement. So I just don't think that this allows the operators the flexibility to choose the event that they want to do.
Councilmember Bingle, then Dillon, then Cathcart.
Yeah, I would say then, obviously, all of us having worked in that space, again, the wristband, again, what allows you to do quickly is identify in a crowd somebody when they have an alcoholic beverage, and they don't have whatever signifier on, it helps you to quickly identify, or if they do have that giant black X and they have an alcoholic drink, you know, hey, there's an issue here. And I think we had talked about this, Mr. Wright, we can do an oral amendment to correct what councilmember Zepone is worried about, correct?
Sure.
Yeah, and so I would offer up that oral amendment if you had some language along those lines to ensure that, again, the intent behind this was with the wristbands or the stamp or whatever, is some clear and non-transferable identifier that was at least permanent enough for that night, that it wouldn't, you couldn't get rid of it, right? Like the giant black X, good luck trying to wash that off your hand, I mean, you're going to bleed before it comes off, but yeah, that was the intent, so I don't know if you have some language as well on that, but I would certainly welcome that amendment.
I would add that the way the amendment's written right now, it's the people over twenty-one that have to have some kind of identification. They don't want to have identification that can be easily transferred from somebody who's underage, so the way it's written now is that it's the over-twenty-one and over crowd that has to wear the wristband. That doesn't preclude you from having both marked in some way, but...
Right.
Councilmember Dillon.
Yeah, thank you, and yeah, I'm supportive of this amendment, open to any kind of oral changes too that we can think through, but I understand the logic behind the Liquor Control Board statement, but again, this isn't an onerous requirement, and it is not replacing, and that was kind of what I felt like the Liquor Control Board was saying, is that this was almost replacing the intent to ID someone, which is not the case. It really is an extra layer of protection for, you know, these are going to be changes that, I mean, I'm definitely supportive of the ordinance as a whole, and proud to co-sponsor it, but I think that with these new changes that we haven't had before, it really is important to have that step. We heard feedback from SPD, you know, we've gotten, again, I've gotten some feedback from different folks in the industry about how this reduces the liability for them, so I hope we can move forward on this.
Councilmember Klitschke.
So in the interest of flexibility, is there a few words, I don't have the language in front of me, but is there a few words we could add that gives person the option to mark minors somehow in lieu of marking over-twenty-one people? That gives...
Something that just says...
I think the...
Non-transferable age identification?
I think the applicable example I would be thinking of is where this would be useful is very small events, where maybe there's just a couple of minors putting an X on their hands, because this is a very broad piece of event facilitation or hosting that we're regulating. It's very tiny events and very huge events, and I think they have different levels of what they need to do, so we do want to keep it flexible.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I understand the flexibility, but my concern would be inconsistency, and how does SPD or LCB or anybody else enforce the rules if it's not clear to them who's being marked, how they're being marked? I think we got to pick one or the other, or it needs to be overwhelmingly clear what that marking is, and without seeing some examples and stuff, it's hard for me to know. So I don't think I'd support that amendment off the cuff here, but certainly open to something that's well thought through.
Councilmember Bingle, then councilmembers Zepone.
Yeah, I would say what you're saying to me makes sense, because again, you know, when we've worked in these venues, I mean, again, the giant black permanent marker X that's on it is a very clear identifier. X that's on it is a, is a very clear identifier. And in the end, the responsibility is on the person serving the alcohol. And so, for those of us who've done it, you know, being able to, again, see it quickly. And so, the idea isn't just to say, everybody who's over 21 must do this. The idea is just to have that age identifier, to say, this is a person of age who can consume alcohol, this is a person who's not of age, who should not be consuming alcohol here. And so, any amendment along those lines, that, what we're trying to accomplish is make it easy to understand who should be, or who should be, who is legally allowed to be consuming alcohol here. That's the intent of what we're trying to do.
So, my question, Mr. Wright, is, we do this amendment, someone could come and challenge us based on state law that we are exceeding state law for our own municipalities? Where would that lead to?
I don't think that's a problem, because right now we require wristbands under our current ordinance. I'm not aware of any challenge to that current language. And what I could suggest is that I work on some language between now and 6 o'clock, and we can have a suspension of the rules and revise the amendment, and try and proceed along those lines if you want.
Councilmembers of Pone, then.
Yeah, I just get a little concerned if we're changing language without checking with operators to figure out what it would look like to them. We almost did that a week ago, and it turned out that they had some impact. So I just get worried about that.
I would, I would support a deferral to get it right, because again, this amendment is not that onerous, and it is very helpful for the people who are, who are running it. Some people might not, you know, like the amendment, but the vast majority of people running events are going to be thankful for this, because they're already doing it anyway. They're already doing it anyway.
In that case, I would entertain a motion for a deferral.
So moved.
Do I, do I need to withdraw my motion before we do that? And, question on that, why would we need to suspend the rules tonight to do an oral amendment?
Because we'd be, I'd be circulating it well after the deadline, if I did, if I circulated a written one. And I think a written one would be a good idea. I mean, we could do an oral one, but I'm going to have to write something down and circulate it to council anyway. And so, I would rather just suspend the rules tonight and allow consideration at that time.
But wouldn't, wouldn't we still need to suspend the rules for an oral amendment if it's substantive and change?
There's some ambiguity about that. Mr. Byrd would say yes, I would think he's probably...
Because, for example, last week we did this on an amendment of mine, but it was non-substantive, and so that would be, in my mind, the difference. It was just a rewrite to make it better English.
And this is substantive, so.
Councilmembers of Pone?
I would prefer not to defer. I think this has been deferred several times. I think this, to get the language right, it could be brought up again as a separate ordinance, and would welcome that process instead.
Sure. I guess what I would say then is, let's pass this amendment then, and we'll bring up the next amendment. Or we can bring up an ordinance to, to correct whatever language there is, so.
Or I'd say the inverse, don't pass this amendment...
I'm sure you will.
And then bring it forward. It gives you the onus to bring it forward to change it, rather than, there's no onus to the amendment.
Okay, so...
So I, I've brought the motion forward, I think it's been seconded. I think it makes sense, I'll be, I'll be voting for it, so.
Okay, so we're on the Second Amendment. Is there any more conversation? It's been moved in second, all in favor of supporting the Second Amendment, which is directly related to wristbands, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes?
No.
No? Any abstentions? Ayes, ahs. Onto the Third Amendment.
All right, so this last amendment was one SPD sent us, or, excuse me. I would move to adopt the final, Bingle proposed amendment here.
Second.
Any questions, the final one?
Does everybody understand what it is?
Yes.
Can you describe it?
Yeah, just quickly, it allows, SPD sent us some concerns, particularly with bad actors who have a history of, of problems. This amendment tries to address that by saying SPD does have the ability to, based on history, deny a purveyor's ability to do that business there.
Councilman McCadcard?
Yeah, I think this is totally common sense, because as an alternative, they would have to shut the entire event down. And that's obviously not something that we want to see. If, say, an event has hired a bad actor, perhaps unbeknownst to them, and they're applying for this liquor license, the way this amendment, or the way this ordinance was changed last week, essentially SPD would have no choice but to shut the entire event down, rather than just simply limiting the beer garden. So, to me, this is common sense, it's, it absolutely makes a ton of sense that we would do this.
Councilmember Klitschke?
I'm sorry for not knowing the answers. Do other cities do this? I'm just not familiar with the concept of SPD approving...
I think if Mr. Wright could just give us a rundown as to the application process when it comes in, then when it gets to the city.
To the extent I know about it.
Yes.
So, when you apply for a special occasion license with the LCB, among the many things they do is they pass that application down to the local jurisdiction where the event's going to take place. Here, I understand that goes to the mayor, and then down to, I believe, Tammy Palmquist, who circulates it among various departments, asks for comments, and the municipality has 20 days to get back to the LCB with comments. So at that time, SPD, if they had concerns about the operator, they could actually say, this is a bad operator, don't give them a special occasion license. They may have other concerns about criminal history or something like that, which they could also convey to the LCB. At that point, LCB, after the 20 days, decides whether or not they're going to grant the special occasion permit. And if they do, then you're still, as an applicant, looking at your application with the city for a special events license, and you'd have to meet the extra requirements in the code, however it ends up after today, wristbands or no wristbands, or what have you. And the city would issue a permit, so long as you're compliant. Current code says that the police chief, or his or her designee, can decide whether or not to deny the permit, based on conditions in the code, whatever that means. There are a couple of things in there that concern me about unwritten regulations and other bases, that they could deny a permit that I didn't think were appropriate, and so I drafted this language. But one of the things I also considered was whether or not they should have the ability to deny a permit based on whether or not there were alcohol service issues related with this event. And that, to me, felt like the purview of the LCB. Now, in my view of this, this is a permit question. So what you're doing is taking away, if you leave the Zepone-Bingle-Dylan version in place, the First Amendment, if you leave that in place, what you are doing is saying to the police chief, you can deny a permit, but not for alcohol service issues, because they've already gotten their special occasion permit from the LCB. It doesn't affect enforcement. I don't have a good answer to Councilmember McCadcard about shutting down the entire event, but it doesn't affect enforcement. If they see a violation of your special occasion license, or the local ordinance other terms, they can still shut you down, they can still take enforcement action. It's a permitting provision that prevents the chief from denying a permit based on alcohol service issues. So, it's not intended to affect enforcement, it's intended to affect whether or not they get a local permit.
Go ahead, Councilmember Bingle.
So that seems to conflict with what we were talking about when we were first drafting this, was not what, what you just said there, but did give them the ability to deny the permit based on alcohol service level. So I don't understand what conflict you just said there.
Well, right now, the chief, the way the code is written...
Right.
Could deny a permit to a special event based on any of the factors enumerated in SMC 1039040. And that, in theory, includes alcohol service issues. Because really, the way the code is written now, it's very broad on what they can deny. And what this does is say, you can deny it for a variety of reasons, but you can't deny it for alcohol service issues, because they've got their special occasion license from the state.
Can you, what is an alcohol service issue?
It would be something to relate to the way they, they've set up the event, provided that they're going to serve minors or not, or, excuse me, allow minors, not serve minors. Whether they're going to allow minors in the event, the fencing issues, security issues, other issues that they've identified for the LCB in their application for a license. Those are all things that struck me as the purview of the LCB. And that if you've satisfied the LCB on your alcohol service issues, that that should be the end of the question as an event sponsor, as far as alcohol service issues. Now maybe the police will say, we don't like this event because it obstructs or reroutes street traffic in some way, or has some other impacts that have nothing to do with alcohol service. They would still have the ability to deny the permit on that. They just can't say, we don't like the fact that you're allowing minors in the beer garden. That would not be...
Okay.
...a permissible reason to deny it. I'm sorry, that was a long way to get to that answer for you.
Councilman McCadcard?
Yeah, so if we just expressly said in ordinance, the police cannot, for reasons of allowing minors into the event, this, though, the way it was amended a week ago is far broader, the language is far broader than that. And so, if it was specific too, I would agree with that, but I don't think that that's how it's written.
No, it's broader than that. I mean, it's broader than simply whether or not you allow minors, it's whether or not you've taken adequate steps to control drinking in your particular event.
Right. And at the end of the day, it's SPD that's going to have to deal with the consequences of an event that goes sideways. And so I think that they need to have that purview.
Well, I would challenge, if an event goes through the whole process of the Liquor Control Board, have met all the requirements, it's gone through the city processes, gone down the list, and then it gets to the bottom, and then for whatever conditions, that ambiguity word in there, then the police says they can't have it. I think that's a little, that's a little onus on a nonprofit to go through that at the last minute, and without more clarity for them is why it was denied. We asked public safety officers about history, they only gave us some anecdotal stuff around this issue. It was not very specific, especially to beer gardens and events. So I would have real difficulty supporting this one as to, at the bottom of the knife, you know, they're out of the game. Councilmember Klitschke?
I think in order to support this amendment, I would have to hear from the SPD that they have communicated in the past that somebody who has applied for a special event permit was a bad actor, and they communicated that to the Liquor Control Board, and the Liquor Control Board did not check them out. My experience with running these events is, they always show up to my event, and they look at everything, and I've had to use wristbands in the past for my, you know, 40 to 80 people that are getting one-out pours of wine. So, I'm a little bit wary of adding more process onto that, being someone who's hosted small events.
Councilmember McCadcard?
Yeah, I, you very well may be right, but I think in the past, we have never changed the policy to encourage the interaction of minors and alcohol, and I think that's what this does. And again, we can argue that it's okay, it's a good thing, there's some positives that come out of this, but it does create another level of concern. In fact, my wife and I were talking about this this weekend, and, you know, there's some things that are not in this, and that's why I won't be supporting this tonight, but, but there's some things that, that I think would make a lot of sense, there's just no time for more amendments. But, but in my mind, this is just changing the game. And so I think you have to have a whole different level of concern and thoughtfulness to something like this, where you are actively encouraging the interaction between these two, so.
Councilmember Bingle, and, I'm sorry, did you see it? Have your hand raised, of Pone?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Bingle, and then Councilmembers of Pone.
Yeah, this was just a direct response from a letter that we got from SPD and SFD as well, telling us about concerns that they had with the ordinance as proposed. And so, this language was drafted to, to address their concerns, and so, these are things that, that I think are fair and reasonable policies. So I, I'm in support of them tonight.
Yeah, I just want to say that we reached out to the mayor's office, and I believe that she was okay without this amendment, too.
Are we ready for the question on this? So, was there a motion made? It's been so long ago, and it was seconded, okay? Moved in second to accept the Bingle-proposed amendment. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those, no? No?
No.
Any abstentions? The noes, ahs. Thank you so much.
How many noes were there?
Five, I believe, and two, two noes.
Two noes.
Two yeses, five noes.
Yes, that's right.
Two to five, two to five. Does not pass.
Did not, yeah.
Does not pass, okay.
That is it for tonight's agenda.
We are in recess until 6 o'clock tonight. Please join us then.